Good evening. This is the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is seven thirty P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, can we have the roll call?
Keef Offer?
Here.
De Haven?
Here.
Spruul?
Here.
Dobree?
Here.
Randall?
Here.
Lewis? Medina?
Here. Note that we do not have Councilmember Lewis with us tonight, but we still have a quorum. Then do we have approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made by Dobree and seconded by De Haven?
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Randall? De Haven?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're moving on to number two on our agenda, the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, the listing under consent agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by city council. Either the public or council member may request that an item may be removed from the consent agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I will ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the consent agenda for discussion after reading the list. A, approval of work session and meeting minutes from city council on September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. B, approval of the expenditure lists for October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. C, approval of a tavern liquor license renewal for Purple Sage Rib Co. and Saloon LLC DBA Purple Sage Rib Co. located at twenty-five ninety-one East Main Street, Cortez. And D, approval of a beer and wine liquor license renewal and an outdoor dining agreement from Jody Jarling DBA Zoo Gallery located at forty-eight West Main Street, Cortez. Would anyone like anything removed for discussion?
I move that council approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Keef Offer?
Spruul?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
De Haven?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. All right, we're on number three on our agenda, public participation. Individuals may not comment on items that are on this council agenda during public participation time. There's no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of thirty minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person, may only speak once, and may not cede time to another commenter. All right, I would like to invite James McKinley to the podium. And just make sure the microphone is on green. Oh. Thank you, Helen.
Didn't press hard enough, thank you. James McKinley, one eleven South Elm Street, Master Jesus. The prior two meetings, I brought forth three issues that are undoing all of the good efforts and massive expenditures that the courts and police and library and addiction industrial complex are doing for unhoused residents, undoing all of it. Number one, meaningful work unavailable to our unhoused residents in any quantity that would make a difference. Meaningful work being the drug that keeps people off illegal substances, including ourselves. Number two, reentry programs nonexistent for people returning from fabulously expensive, fabulously effective rehab, dumping them off into the same streets that put them in rehab. Number three, the crushing inhumanity we impose on them every night. No safe legal place to pitch a tent, six to six, no legal place to relieve themselves. I came to the city council these last two meetings, having found over the prior nine months that the agencies refuse to publicly discuss any such issues, even to acknowledge them. And then last meeting, by the end, I discovered the same with the city manager's office and the council and mayor. I asked myself why. And I think the answer is this. Neither the city nor the agencies set the agenda, the citizens do. If there is clear, strong priority articulated by the community, something might happen. If there isn't, it won't. And I wouldn't want it any other way. No one should live life for another person, no small body should live life for a community, that's unhealthy. In my view, no community can be healthy that heartlessly abandons to needless destruction its most vulnerable population. I can't resist the joy of trying to help a soul come to life here or there, be it housed or unhoused. And I think we are missing that opportunity to a large degree. It is certainly my right to hold such a view, though never to try and impose it on anyone. But I will try and facilitate an increased movement in humanity in the community, and I will try to bring light to what few success stories there might be around the community and country that we could learn from. And I may come back here and share on such subjects, hoping to stimulate growth in our humanity. I've checked the box for requests for follow-up on the speaker card, and I'll take any and all well-intended help, guidance, insights that I can get. With my background, it would be a crime if I didn't have abilities to share that are relevant here, and I desperately need any and all constructive correction that I can get.
Thank you, James. Thank you. All right, do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Okay. We will close our public comment, public participation portion and move on to four on our agenda, presentations. We have none tonight. Five is public hearings, we have none. Six is unfinished business, we have none. And so seven is new business. Seven A is bid results for the airport perimeter fence project. We'll consider awarding the contract for the two thousand and twenty-five Airport North Hangar Perimeter Fence and Emergency Gate Replacement Project. And authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city. This is presented by Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. So as you mentioned, this is for the, the north fence perimeter and emergency access gate replacement, both of which are much overdue. In the case of the hangars on the north side of the airports, you guys know as you drive in, those north stretch of hangars are open to the land side or the street. So this, this, this accomplishes security and some level of privacy, but mostly security and wildlife prevention in that area. And then this would allow us to get rid of those makeshift panels of fence in between the hangars. And there's wildly different variations of, of attempts to close those areas off. So this project is, as advertised, it includes the description of the project and what we're expecting to get out of it. We made six hundred fifty-eight contacts, thirty documents were downloaded. It's, it's, the installation of approximately twelve hundred feet of eight-foot-tall chain-link fence with barbed wire strand, security strand. Two new gates, one being the emergency gate on the county road for the fire emergency access, which our current gate is really narrow and broken, basically, we have to maintain it constantly. And adding an access gate for pilot and airport operations in that stretch of north perimeter fence. This also includes a pedestrian gate by the airport operations office there by the terminal turnaround. It'll be a maglock keypad-controlled gate. And, and the contractor is basically responsible for all the electric work and site verification and procurement of materials and accessories. We'll do some of our own work with like the drainages that we need to pull some culverts out of and fix some of the slope, and then we'll remove the old fencing structures on our, on our time. The bids were due by fifteen hundred on Monday, sixth October, two thousand and twenty-five. The following companies responded. Hornet Fence, who the city's done quite a bit of work with already, out of Farmington, New Mexico, they came in at seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred nineteen dollars. Sierra Alta Fence out of Farmington as well, eighty-six thousand, two sixty-nine and thirty-two cents. And then we get into some higher bids, contract equipment operators out of Mead, Colorado for a hundred and fifty-three thousand even. And Custom Fence Logan, Utah, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Service center and airport personnel reviewed the four qualified bids and scored them according to the evaluation criteria listed in the advertisement for bid. The process uses selection of competitive sealed best value bidding method. Both qualifications and bid prices were considered, and staff determined the final ranking with qualifications given forty percent and bid price given sixty percent of the value of the weighted criteria. As far as fiscal impact, as I mentioned before, there's some remainder of ARPA grant funds that we are, have planned to spend on this project. And we, we're moving this project pretty quick because we had waited on the runway, and we need to expend that by the end of the year. So thankfully with the discussions with contractors, all of them were pretty much ready to get this done by the end of the year. And given the prices that we got back in our previous experience with Hornet Fence, we elected to choose Hornet Fence or recommended to choose Hornet Fence at their bid price of seventy-nine thousand, nine nineteen. So that's what we're recommending to you councils, that we approve the Airport North Hangar Perimeter Fence and Emergency Gate Replacement Project to Hornet Fence LLC of the, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, nine nineteen. Any questions?
I guess I'm assuming the way that it'll be constructed is that the folks who want, need to access their hangar, they'll, there's enough room for them to get off the main road to then keypad in and?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, the fence will be outside of the right-of-way for the road, and then setback further from that will be the driveway to the gate, so it gets them off the road. And even with our speed limit reduced down to twenty-five, we still have a lot of speeders down that road, so we want to keep it safe, right? So it'll be, I don't remember the number, but it'll be setback enough for a pickup and a trailer at, at most.
I didn't realize you reduced the speed, sorry.
I don't know your vehicle. Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you for your clear presentation and, and, yeah, I think I move that city council award the contract for the two thousand and twenty-five Airport North Hangar Perimeter Fence and Emergency Gate Replacement Project to Hornet Fence LLC at its bid price of seventy-nine, nine, one. And authorize the city manager to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city, on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
All right, motion made by Dobree and seconded by Spruul?
Randall?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
De Haven? Spruul? Keef Offer?
Aye.
Medina?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna move on to seven B on our agenda. Letter of support for Historic Structure Assessment Grant for the Manah School Building owned by Montezuma Cortez School District. This is presented by Helen West, our Community and Economic Development Specialist.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a pretty straightforward letter of support for the Montezuma Cortez School District for Historic Structure Assessment Grant from History Colorado, the State Historical Fund, for the amount of twenty thousand dollars. This is a planning grant, as you guys probably know, the school district is interested in assessing what they can do with Manah, possibly turning it into some type of housing. So just a straightforward letter of support.
I move that the city council authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city of Cortez the letter of support for Montezuma Cortez School District State Historic Fund Grant Application for, for the Manah School Building.
Second.
Motion made by De Haven and seconded by Keef Offer?
Dobree?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
De Haven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on seven C on our agenda, Resolution Number Twelve, Series two thousand and twenty-five. Consider, council will consider adopting Resolution Number Twelve, Series two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution accepting and adopting the City of Cortez Transportation Plan as guiding policy for the City of Cortez, presented by Casey Simpson, Simpson, our interim director of public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present not only the resolution, but also Jones and De Mills' work on the transportation plan and to show you guys some visuals and some data associated with the plan. I'm a little bit late to, or I was late to join on the efforts associated with all this work. It started in twenty-three with planning grants received from the Federal Highway Administration. The vision was to implement a zero, or vision zero safety plan for our transportation network and large-scale enhancements aimed at achieving improved safety objectives. This transportation plan will work with the existing master streets plan. It will not replace the existing plan. It focuses on projects that we hope to pursue in the near future and plan for growth in the longer-term future. I do want to acknowledge and affirm Ian Robertson's work on it through the past couple of years. He's been a force of continuity on the project, and I appreciate it. And with that, I'll turn it over to McLean Farmer with Jones and De Mill to give you guys a little presentation.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you, Casey. Thanks for having me, Mayor and Council, I appreciate it. I've presented to you several times, I know, I, I think all of you have seen me present before. So I'm gonna just go over briefly kind of the final product that we've came up with, kind of go over the deliverables that we've given to the, to the city, and then we'll, I'll take questions at any point. So as I go through this, if you have a question, feel free to interrupt me, I'll try and keep this brief. So there were four phases to the project, and I think all of you got this memorandum that Ian put together, Ian and Casey put together. So just looking at those phases, I'm gonna quickly touch on each phase, and then I'll go through the, the map here. So phase one, I'll just quickly touch on this. This was kind of a quick hitter, phase one. The city needed to submit all of their desired projects or any kind of a wish list of projects to C dot to look at for their long-term planning, I think it was their two thousand and fifty plan. And as we, as the city gave us projects, what we did is we went and estimated what those project costs would be, developed a scope of work to submit to C dot, and then we made a memorandum to send to C dot to be able to look at that for their planning purposes. So that was phase one. Phase two was a pavement assessment and maintenance planning. I'm gonna show you that here really quick. I think most of you have seen this. So what we did is we took a smartphone, we mounted it inside a truck, we drove every street both directions in the city. We rated every road using a A I system, so it's not a, it's, it's a unbiased screening of the roads telling you what condition the roads are in. The rating system is EMI. EMI is a rating of zero, or sorry, one to five, five being the worst, one being the best. So your average score here in Cortez is a three-point-two-nine. And, and just to give you kind of a, a reference for that, anywhere from like three and a half to five, typically we say you need to reconstruct those roads. Anything three and a half or below, you can typically maintain using preservation or rehab projects. So what we did is we took the data that this program that we use called Biolytics gave us, and we came up with a maintenance plan for each road in the city. Some of those treatments included melon fills, micro-surfacing, which I'll touch on here in a second, and then full reconstruction of the roads. Is anybody familiar with micro-surfacing? Have you heard that term before? Similar to chip seal. The only difference is, and I'll show you a quick video. See if I can blow it up. Oops. See if I can blow it up. Oops. You can see in this on the screen here, there's a big machine that has aggregate in it. It dumps it out, adds slurry, cement powder and aggregate, mixes those together. And then on the backside of that, there's a screed that screeds it out smooth. So a lot of people will ask why um why not chip seal and why micro-surfacing? So you can see up here on the screen, I have a chip seal example. It's kind of hard to see. I know you have screens up there in the front. But using my mouse, maybe, well, in front of the driveway on the right-hand side, you can see the chip loss on the city streets. That's caused from turning movements when people come out of the driveway and they turn without moving, it peels those chips right off. Um, the second disadvantage with chip seal is you have basically two operations. One, sweeping the street, um putting the oil down, sealing it with the chips. And then typically you'll seal those chips with a flush coat or paint those black. So there's two operations. You're shutting the the road down twice rather than just once. With micro-surfacing, you're just shutting it down once, micro-surfacing, and then you're you're done with the project. Especially in streets that you have curb and gutter on as well. You don't have any chip loss and the chips don't end up in the gutter. Eh especially in a city street, it decreases the the amount of street sweeping that you guys have to do as well.
Is it finer grain too? Cause the chip sealed roads out in the county are kind of dangerous on a road bike cause they're I feel like the chips are kind of big.
Yeah, so the chip seal is a basically a three-eighths inch screened rock where the micro-surfacing is more of a three-eighths inch minus, meaning it's a uh well-grated material, has like sand, um all the different sizes of rock between three-eighths and the two-hundred sieve, which is like sand. The nice thing about that is it's smooth, especially for bikers, um specifically. That's why I like it myself. But it also, you can see on this street, this was done back in twenty-eighteen. Um, there's no chip loss on this on the street. People pulling out, you're not seeing any loss of that material on the road itself. Um, this typically lasts about two years longer than chip, sometimes longer. I don't say any longer, just in case. Um, it typically it doesn't fail. What you're gonna see is the cracking come through. Um, after about ten years, you'll see more cracking come through um over time. Any questions on those two treatments? Okay. Okay, so that. I'm gonna jump ahead here. So this is your maintenance plan. You've got friction seal, micro-surfacing and hot-in-place recycling first. Um, you might ask why we're doing preservation first. It's uh because good roads cost less. Keeping your good roads good is a lot cheaper than letting your good roads go bad and then trying to catch up over time. The second phase is the long-term plan. Um, so you've got a a couple of roads in there that are micro-surfacing and then most of it's full-depth reconstruction on all the yellow and blue roads that you can see there. Okay, so that covers the pavement assessment. Um, any questions on that one? Moving on, the future network planning. On the future network planning, we basically took your old map, like Casey said, put it into this plan, um updated it, made sure it looks good, ma- made sure that make sure the modeling looks good. There weren't many changes there. Um, this roadway surface type map is just an update to your um roadway map. Basically, it's how uh a lot of the funds get allocated. How many paved miles you have, how many dirt miles you have and so on. We also did traffic counts throughout the city. This is good for the police department as well as Public Works. Um, this tells you how many trucks you have on roads, um the speed at which people are going, gives you um the average daily traffic. So each one of those dots represents a count we did and the amount of traffic that's on it. Um, you can kind of scroll through these on your own as well. This is a crash data map that helped us determine if we need to do any safety projects. Um, these here are bridges. Um, you don't really have many in the city. Most of them are outside city limits. And the last map I'll show you is a level of service map. This is telling you if a road is going to get too congested, it'll start to decrease in level of service. So level of service just means like uh in grade school where you have A through F, A being the worst, F meaning failing. Um, looking at the level of service map here, no roads currently have a bad level of service. No roads are too congested. Um, in the future, the worst uh congested road that you're gonna see um is a level of service C, which is still considered um manageable.
Does this account for like intersections or just roads? Cause Empire and Mildred.
Yeah, so this is just roadway. Um, intersection level of service would be completely different. So we're just looking strictly, Kate, does this road have capacity to handle the vehicle traffic um that's going to be on in the future? So. Okay. Um, I'm just gonna touch on public involvement really quick. We during this process, we finished up the plan. We took it to the public. We presented to the public in four ways. Um, we went to social media. We had a public open house, which we had over sixty participants come to that open house. We also um left maps and comment cards here in the city offices and other offices um throughout the community as well. Um, and then we also, uh let's see, what was my fourth? Oh, and online. So we had an online map where they could go and specifically comment on a specific area. We had a hundred fifteen comments come in um through those four different sources and we implemented those. A lot of those were citizen complaints about a pothole or or different things throughout the city. We were looking for specifically um things to do with the plan and so we took those comments and implemented those into the plan itself. Okay, so that that takes care of Phase Four. After we implemented that, we came up with this memorandum or Ian and and Casey came up with this memorandum, um basically presenting to the council for adopting a resolution.
Thanks, McLean. I just want to point out a few uh pretty cool synergies here. So the work that they did with Biolytics, the pavement condition indexing will be uh imported into our OpenGov. So we'll be able to see and track the work done on these streets. A few interesting uh opportunities for learning that I encountered were that um I don't know that Cortez is unique in this, but a lot of the major intersection, I would say intersection concerns involve CDOT, which we have less control over. Um, and then the the obvious uh collaboration opportunities with the the county to address some of these thoroughfares that obviously start in the city and then end elsewhere um in other jurisdictions. So uh I found it fascinating. Um, I think micro-surfacing is a is a pretty interesting path moving forward and we do have micro-surfacing scheduled in our twenty-six budget as well. Should council choose to adopt the um or approve the Resolution Number Twelve, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, we can really begin working and formally pursuing the plan suggested with this research.
Um, this may not be related to like this document, but between this document and um the master streets plan, like when do we address multimodal, you know, like bike lanes and uh walk like other ways to to get around town?
Do you want me to take that one? We did in this plan also, we included a section um of a very, very high-level active transportation plan. I wanna emphasize the high-level nature of this. The reason I say high-level is we didn't do any pedestrian counts, um and we didn't have any pedestrian count data. So my recommendation would be to take this map that I'm I'm showing up here today and uh I think is Parks and Rec doing something similar to that? I think Parks and Rec will be doing something similar to that, um looking at active transportation in more depth. But this does have a start at least.
So um Casey, one of the things that happened after we did a micro-surfacing project on Empire Street is we got a lot of feedback and basically to sum it up, it was that, oh, the city did the project on the cheap. And people didn't understand what micro-surfacing was. And I'm wondering if there's any way that we could get Kelly Codner to come up with some sort of a a release or some sort of a a description that's on the website or something that talks about why we're doing micro-surfacing instead? Because the public perception is that it's just the inexpensive, quick, easy way to do things and that furthermore, it might not last. So I I feel like there might be some public education piece to it.
Yeah, um, I'd I'd heard that and that's why um we had McLean speak directly to to that tonight and we should continue those efforts. I agree. I would I would, I guess, note since this is a public forum, that micro-surfing is not cheaper than chip sealing. It's actually more expensive and it lasts longer. I also would say that our um our bid selection process has um been revisited and we're implementing less of the cost focus and more of the value focus into our bid evaluations, which I think you guys have seen, which should hopefully mean that we're not getting a low-bid um contractor coming in and and doing something on the cheap that's not gonna be of the best value.
I guess my concern is just kind of getting the word out to the public about what it is. So.
And I think I think using this plan um to educate the public with the Biolytics, what we did is specifically we looked at what treatment should go out go on what road. So we didn't choose roads that are going to fail. We chose roads that are in good shape, good condition that we're only gonna cover with micro-surfacing if they're in good enough shape to do so. Another thing to distinguish is micro-surfacing is very different than mastic seal, which is the spray-on treatment that basically just paints the road black. So ma- making sure the public understands the difference that we're we're adding thickness to the road as well.
We will definitely engage with Kelly as well. I mean, that's a great idea for sure.
I had a question. Um, I I found it very interesting, the uh the concept of the road diets. And you gave us a couple of possible scenarios for Main Street or One-Sixty. And um in that, um because our Main Street, One-Sixty is a highway highway roadway, I guess, is that the correct term for what it is?
Highway, yes.
It's a highway roadway or something. Um, it comes under Colorado Department of Transportation, right? So um if you're talking about the um road diet and the possibility of implementing that here, are we not restricted on that sort of a maneuver, given the fact that this is a DOT, is a C DOT, CDOT fairway?
Yes.
Can you speak to that a little bit? Because that we have three examples, the one that was on in Lancaster, California, and then the one that was in, I think it was Concord, New Jersey, New Hampshire, I'm sorry, and then the other one on Des Moines, Iowa. And those none of those appeared to be highway roadways.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Um, I don't have it pulled up, but I could I can speak to that. Um, in the document, we do talk about road diets on the CDOT highways. We looked at that specifically for pedestrian safety, um as well as uh just keeping the the speeds down through the city, right? Ultimately, the recommendation is you can look at a road diet. The the recommendation wasn't to do a road diet. CDOT ultimately would have to do their own study, speaking to CDOT. Uh, CDOT's not going to just take the city's word for it. They're going to have to um do the study to see if it's even feasible. Um, the level of service does decrease. So the congestion, meaning the congestion, gets larger with a road diet. So that's one of the things that we write about in the report is the benefit of doing a road diet can also cause disadvantages such as roadway congestion, um especially in the in the peak hours, right? Um, during school hours, beginning of school, end of school, beginning of the workday, end of workday, you're gonna see more congestion on that main road. That being said, we gave recommendations, if you do a road diet, then the city has to develop roads to the side for that traffic to go on otherwise. Does that make sense?
Well, I I read that and I and I get that. I think my my the heart of my question is 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 this a feasible thing? I mean, how many cities like ours who have this highway roadway right down the middle of them are allowed to bring it down to three lanes of traffic by the state? Um, I don't know that I I can't come up with one right off the bat, just thinking of all the roads that I've driven. So I I I mean, is it really feasible?
The city will not be able to do that. It would it would have to be a recommendation to CDOT to study and then CDOT would have to implement.
Right, but what I'm saying is has CDOT actually done that on our size of a roadway anywhere that we're aware of? Cause all of the examples aren't aren't.
I.
Aren't applicable.
I don't know that.
Thanks. I just wanted to know if it was a feasible thing to even per start to pursue it.
I don't know.
If we don't know of any other city in the state of Colorado that this has happened in.
Right. That was right at the beginning of this project. Um, there's been multiple people over the project. One of the people over the project wanted us to look into that and that was part of that study, so.
And I would say that um even just anecdotally, a couple of weeks ago, I had a resident reach out and ask why we had a light over there by um KFC and uh the hotels right there. And um in researching that, uh I did talk to CDOT and CDOT does implement traffic slowing tech. But quite a bit of data to make sure that they are being a good partner and reducing speeds and separating traffic and ultimately, when I spoke to that resident, I said, yeah, it's sometimes frustrating to be slowed down in an area where there's not much traffic, but the whole point of it is to make things go slower. So there I guess there's a lot of tools that see we not we might not be aware of that CDOT is implementing to help keep us safe as well, that aren't necessarily.
Right, and that's just what they did on South Broadway for us, the with the crosswalks and the recent changes. But I just wanted to know if there's really one that actually happened to this extent on a Colorado roadway highway and I don't know that we have that example. So thanks a bunch for your help.
Great question, though.
I had a question. How how does this interact with the existing highway access control plan that the city of Cortez and CDOT have? I know that has been divisive in the community. If you look at that plan, there's a lot more medians and I I don't think people, I don't think for the most part, people want that. I think that looking at things like road diets and things are options to try and find other ways, other safety control me- measures. Um, but but how? But, but how does this plan interact with that existing plan?
Are you specifically the CDOT corridor plan? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, the 160 access control plan. It was approved in, I think, 2016, I believe.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't add any accesses into, in any new accesses along the state road. But as far as interacting with it, we, we didn't add any that would, what am I trying to say here? We didn't add any accesses that would make the road worse. Does that make sense? So the access spacing, we considered that if we added a new road or, or the city on their old plan had a road coming into 160 and the spacing wasn't adequate, then we moved it to be adequate. That's about as far as it went.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just think, I think that that plan is something that we should, we council should look at and see about potentially reevaluating it. I don't know that it's a fit for our community. If you, if you look at the actual plan and it, it would be a lot more of removing accesses, not adding accesses over a longer period of time. And I don't know that, I don't know that that is a great fit for our community. So I think this plan can be really beneficial in helping us grow and gather other ideas and get some data to start to work with CDOT on, on what else we can do.
We did do an analysis on 160. Based on the current state of the 160 corridor plan, 90% of those accesses are too close. So unless the CDOT corridor plan changes, then those accesses, there probably won't be any more accesses along 160.
I, I think what, what I'm saying is just, I want to, and I think all of council wants to make sure that the highway that we don't control through our, through our city is both safe and good for business in our city. We don't want to obstruct people, one, from crossing the highway where necessary and to be able to do that safely, but also to be able to, to support business and grow our city and do the things that we need to do to make this city the best it can be and not be beholden to CDOT for, this is the plan and this is what we're going to do over the next 50 years. We want to make sure that we have input on how that works and how we, how we make that work. And I, I think that some of the things that you brought up in here can be helpful in that conversation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We ready to adopt her.
I move that the city council approve resolution number 12, series 2025, a resolution accepting and adopting the city of Cortez transportation plan as a guiding policy for the city of Cortez.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Spruul.
Randall.
Yes.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dobry.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to D on our agenda. Seven D is appointment of two council members for the Community Support Grant Selection Committee, presented by Drew Sanders, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Every year, the city council budgets money from the general fund to support community organizations, specifically to preserve the, preserve or enrich the health, education, welfare, or fitness of the community. Generally, organizations can submit to receive grants up to $5,000 annually. And to do that, we actually put a committee together that includes staff members and two council members. We've been doing this over the last two or three years and we're requesting to do that again. Therefore, I'm coming to council and requesting the two people be able to, or two council members be appointed to that committee. The committee will not meet until after the November 12th meeting. We don't have a specific date, only because we're going to try to work around council schedules, whatever that is. We don't want to exclude somebody because we have the wrong date.
Okay. To start us off, Councilmember Lewis couldn't make it tonight due to personal reasons, but he did, in his emails, say that he is interested in putting his hat in for the committee.
I've done it for the last two years and I really enjoyed it. And if nobody wants to join the fun, I would be more than happy to do that again.
I'd also be interested in participating this year.
Since I have done it twice already, I think Councilman Lewis would probably enjoy doing it, so I, I would go ahead and nominate him.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, you have a motion.
I move to appoint Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Randall to the Community Support Grant Selection Committee.
Second.
Motion made by Spruul and seconded by Dobry.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Dobry. Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Randall.
Yes.
Spruul.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to seven E on our agenda, ordinance number 1350, series 2025, an ordinance amending the Cortez Colorado Code of Ordinances concerning the Family Recreation Center sales tax, presented by Drew Sanders, City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Back in 2001, in fact, the election of November 2001, the residents of Cortez voted to include a .55% sales tax increase that would be used to fund construct, the construction equipment, equipping, operating, and maintenance of the Family Recreation Center and then to pay off that bond. That was slated to sunset in 2018 and even though the bond was not yet expired at that point and had not been paid off, that did not occur until 2022. However, on the April 3rd, 2018 election, the question was put before the voter, voters to not sunset that, but rather lower that sales tax from .55 to .35 in order to, you know, and approve that as an indefinite extension of the recreation sales tax to continue the maintenance and equipping of the recreation fund. As part of that ballot question, it became necessary, if it had passed, which it did overwhelmingly, that it was necessary for the city council at that time to pass an ordinance to officially lower the sales taxes described and approved by the voters. During the budget preparation this year, we inadvertently came across this and realized that that never occurred. In fact, we have been collecting at the .55% rate all along, unbeknownst to any of the current staff or the current council. But because we found this, we are obligated to bring it forward and present it to council and the community and just advise you of this oversight. And this was only discovered three weeks ago and so literally, this is the first meeting since that discovery was made and this is our attempt to correct what was left undone at that time. This is for first reading. We of course expect to hear from the community on it. But in this case, this, this ordinance would amend the code to implement the authorization provided by the voters in 2018 during that election to reduce the sale, recreation sales tax from .55 to .35 and then deposit all the revenues received from the recreation sales tax into that recreation center fund. And so, just so everybody knows, because I think there may be some confusion, this is not the general fund. This is solely the recreation fund and it is solely used for that recreation center and any programs that are delivered as part of that. It is not the general fund anywhere else. And I can tell you and the community that even though this oversight has occurred, those monies were still used for the original intent. We never deviated from that. So, and we're spending quite a bit this next year to maintain that and these funds are helping with that. So I submit this to council on first reading and, and welcome the public hearing and discussion that'll be forthcoming on this. And I'm happy to answer any community questions, any council questions regarding this as we move forward. But as this is first reading, I submit it to you at this point.
It seems like housekeeping, first of all, but then second of all, I guess this is the first reading, so unless there are other questions about it specifically, I'd make a motion. Are there any other questions at this point? I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 1350, series 2025, an ordinance amending the Cortez Colorado Code of Ordinances concerning the Family Recreation Center sales tax and set for second and final reading and a public hearing on October 28th.
Second.
Motion made by Keefhoffer and seconded by Randall.
Spruul.
Yes.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Dobry.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. All right, we're moving on to eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinances. We have none, so number nine is city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I did want to kind of report on the charter amendment process. I've hopefully received all the input from staff and certainly if there are any council members that have changes to the charter that they are interested in, I have certainly recorded the ones that have been discussed based on other ordinances that have passed. But if you have any, please, please get them to me as soon as possible. I am suggesting a schedule as follows, and if you'll recall, we have certain timelines that have to be met prior to the election and we, we can't adopt things too early and we can't adopt them too late. And the, if, if we're holding the election on April 7th of 2026, we need to have the first reading of the ordinance setting the ballot question on January 13th and the second reading would be January 27th. I am recommending that perhaps we bring a draft ordinance of that ballot language with all the various recommended changes to you on December 9th, which would be, and we can either do as a draft ordinance on the regular meeting or as part of the work session and I, I haven't discussed this with Mr. Sanders as to what makes most sense in terms of the schedule, but that would be my recommendation. And once, that wouldn't be the final decision of council, but at least you could look at it and, and give us something that we could post on the website to start generating public input so that the public would have it for over a month to, to review prior to the public hearing in January. So if, if there are any thoughts or comments on that schedule, certainly let me know now, I would hope. And with that, I'll leave it up to you.
I was just going to say, I think it would be beneficial to.
Do you want to have a workshop to, 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 to?
Got the draft a few days.
And look at it. I think that process has worked really well for the, the last few kind of larger things we've, we've worked on.
So I, I think doing that as a workshop and then being able to share something a little more polished with the community as we go through that process would be good.
I agree. And I think that based on our recent past experience, that probably not having a meeting on December 23rd, I'm guessing that's going to happen, it always happens every year, that, you know, we need to really be on top of it on the 9th. And so as much time as we can dig into it is better, so we don't, you know, we're not going to have time to revisit it before that first meeting in January.
Hey, Ed, I, I've kind of got, because we've been doing them concurrently, the, the code amendment ordinance is at a similar position in the drafting process. My thought is perhaps because there's less urgency, because there's no election requirement, that we postpone the code amendment process until after the public hearing on the charter amendment, so that would be in February. And it would still get finished before the election on the charter amendments, but rather than try to lump them together, but that may be your preference, I don't know. So I, I'll throw that out for discussion as well.
I, I think because of some of the confusion of what's charter and what's code, I think you'll at least have to touch on some of that in that, in that workshop, just to kind of clarify of these are the charter things. And then we should certainly spend the majority of time on the charter to make sure we can get that done, but at least, at least touch on the things that are code and kind of point out, this is something we're looking at for code. We're, we're planning to do this as code, not as charter, just to make sure that people understand the, the difference between those two and that we are still, the thing that someone wants to update, it isn't getting skipped over, it's, it's potentially in the, in the code update as well. So I think to communicate with the community as well, that would be the best way to do it.
And, and one of the changes to the charter that I'm recommending, and it's actually not a charter or a code amendment, it's just the way it's presented on our website, that they should be two separate documents, so you don't have to figure out where one ends and the other one starts. So that will be a part of the proposal and, and it, it may be more of a housekeeping item, but I think that's kind of important because it took me a while when I first got here to figure out what's the charter and what, what is the code, so.
Are there any clear thoughts or plans or that, that you all are thinking of or have regarding getting our proposal out to the public as far as public education and getting them on board before this goes to the ballot? I mean, do we have, has there been much discussion of that at this point in time?
Other than presenting it in the format that we just discussed at a work session, and then after, the thought is that once the ordinance is in a draft that you all feel is appropriate for public dissemination, we can put that out, we can put it out on the website, we can, you know, I, I don't know that, we're kind of running into the holiday season, so I'm not sure a, a public meet and greet type of a deal in December makes a lot of sense. But we will have, again, the, the first reading of the ordinance would be January 13th, between the 13th and the 27th, or even the first week of, you know, prior to the 13th, we could do a public outreach session that's not necessarily in front of the council, but have it probably here, but have it, you know, at, at a different time so that the public could show up and have a more interactive process. So we'll, we'll look at those and, and, but I, I agree, I think the, the more involvement the public has, the, the better it would be, since it's going to go to the vote. And, and we can have public outreach, you know, when, once the ballot is set, there are restrictions on advocacy in the Fair Campaign Practices Act, but we can certainly do public outreach where we post it and explain what's being proposed. So that, you know, we will have a couple of months there between the public hearing and the election.
Can you expound a little bit about how, what our restrictions would be once it becomes in the, once we go through the second reading? So it's after the second reading that all these restrictions would come into place?
That, that's when the ballot title is set. And once the ballot title is set, we, we are restricted from advocating for ballot measure.
So is advocating, I mean, what does that mean? Does that mean, let's say we want, we want to. Does that mean, let's say, we want, we want to, I mean, what does that entail advocating for?
We could explain what we're proposing, but not print up posters and, you know, march around town and have people, you know, we're spending money, public money campaigning for it.
So we can still speak on the benefits of it?
Yes, we, we can explain.
In, in a public forum?
This is what we're doing, and this is why we're doing it.
Okay.
I think what is key is the opportunity for public input, like multiple venues in which the public can, right? Because I, I think in my experiences that, and, and maybe other people on council have seen the same thing, is that even though we put it out there and host a public meeting, we don't necessarily get a lot of people to come and give input. So as long as we, you know, they can do it online, or, you know, like one info session that first week in January, I think as long as we give the opportunity, I'm comfortable with that.
We'll have a better idea, I think, of those opportunities for your work session in December.
And then the, this question, it may be for you and it may be for the clerk, but we'll, we'll also have to publish a blue book type letter, I would assume, for that as well. Is that correct? And give, and give any opposition the opportunity to?
Once we set the ballot, we have to publish a notice of the election and, yeah.
The blue book is referring to specifically Tabor measures, so if it doesn't have a Tabor measure, then it, no, we would not send a blue book out.
Yeah, this won't be a Tabor issue.
Great. Thank you, Pat. Okay, we'll move on to City Managers' report.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I've got several items for you this evening. First of all, for the community's benefit, the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget is on the website, and also we have copies, printed copies out here in the lobby for people to review. The city staff has worked hard this year as, during the past several weeks to bring a budget to fruition. I'd like to encourage everybody to please weigh in on the proposed budget and comment as appropriate. We take comments here, we take comments via email, we take phone calls, in person, however you want to make comment. Next, I just wanted to advise that the Cortez Police Department Falls Citizens Academy is slated to start tomorrow, and will run for six weeks through November nineteenth. This academy is intended to give residents a practical look at the, at law enforcement and some of what they do. It's very beneficial in the way of education for our community members. Also, I just wanted to point out, and this is somewhat on behalf of our IT department, that the city is seeing an increase in the number of sophisticated phishing attempts targeting our employee emails. This heightened attack began in September of this year with a four hundred percent increase in threats that have been caught. In October of this year, it has become even worse. Our cybersecurity programs do work and catch a majority of the threats. However, our employees need to be vigilant and well-trained in identification of these communications and how to handle them. I believe a memo was presented to council as well that should be on your desk to remind you of that, and the bottom line is, no matter how much we spend and how sophisticated our security, cybersecurity is, it'll never be enough, and it falls on all of us to make sure that we keep our system safe. Also, the City of Cortez Historic Preservation Board has been nominated as one of the twenty twenty-six People's Choice Award nominees by History Colorado Staff for the Stephen H. Hart Award for Outstanding Projects That Preserve Colorado's Meaningful Past. Voting is open to the public through October twenty-seventh and can be accessed through the news release on, button on the landing page of the Cortez website. And that concludes my report for this evening, pending any questions.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to eleven on our agendas, the City Council Committee Report, the Mayor's Report on the Workshop. All right, from, first, we had an update on our municipal election. Normally, the county supports us in our elections, and unfortunately, they don't have the resources this year or maybe moving forward, so we are looking at other long-term options for us and potentially collaborating with the other towns that relied on the county as well, Dolores and Mankas, because we all have elections on the same day every other year. Then we had a presentation from Homes Fund, and I strongly encourage the community to watch that presentation. We learned what the Homes Fund provides. They do homebuyer education, they do one-on-one financial counseling, they provide, they have a loan program for first-time homebuyers for their mortgage and down payment, and then even started for loans for construction and not just already-built homes. They've, they were awarded three point two million from Prop one, two, three, and they've already provided sixty-five homes in the City of Cortez, equaling, I think it was about twelve million dollars. So great resources for those who are looking to buy their home for the first time, or buy a first home. Oh, and their website is homesfund.org, so H-O-M-E-S-F-U-N-D.org. Great, okay, we'll move on to eleven B, other board reports. We'll start with Councilmember Randall.
Your report.
Okay.
I was able to attend the library board meeting. A few items of note, the library director, Beth Edson, is resigning, and her last day will be November seventh. The library, we've already started looking for new candidates, and there should be interviews in November and early December, and a person should be selected shortly after that. Since the Aspen Cat ILS system has been implemented, our circulation internally and interlibrary loans has gone up significantly. Beth should probably be able to pull some more concrete numbers on, on that before she leaves, but she was pretty shocked at, at how many more items were going out internally and externally. And in some big news, they got a ten thousand dollar grant from the Laura Foundation to purchase two three D printers, laptops, gaming computers, and robot kits, because the, like, programs for the three D printing and using Tinkercat programs have been really popular with kids and teenagers. And then some events that are going on, there is Friends of the Library Books sale October thirtieth to November first, so if you need some books for the winter, that would be a great time to go get some affordable books. There is also a fundraiser for the Friends of the Library called Library Libations happening November fourteenth from seven to nine P.M., and that's a Great Gatsby themed, and they're encouraging people to dress up, there'll be appetizers and drinks from local businesses around town, and that will be at the library. And then next Thursday, Alana Yasi, author of The Navajo Kitchen, will be speaking at the Cortez Library, so if you want to learn more about her cookbook and hear from her, that, that's another great event. And then unfortunately, they have had several programs that have been canceled during the government shutdown just because of partnerships with federal agencies like Mesa Verde.
We did not have a quorum, so Par Fab did not meet.
All right, and then I have an update for the Arts Committee. I was unable to attend the meeting, so I am doing this based on the minutes, so apologize to Helen, I don't know where she went, if I misspeak, but the Arts Committee reviewed their twenty twenty-five work plan and went through a few things that, to do towards the end of this year. They reflected on their presence at Third Thursday. Their table was a hit, they usually had activities, like art-related activities, and most of the supplies were donated by individuals, and so next year, they're looking at getting supplies donated from businesses as well. And one thing they're looking at is mural mosaic kits, but yeah, so look for their booth at the next Third Thursday event next year. They are part of the review committee for the eight-one-three-two-one launch mini-grants. No applications came in for October, so any businesses considering applying, go ahead and apply, there's still funds available. Twenty twenty-six projects are murals, murals. Mesa Verde National Park has actually recently put out a call for muralists, so if you know anyone, there is a website to apply, I can reach out to the Arts Committee. And then they are collecting a list of muralists in the area, which will be sent to the, that the committee will have on hand. They're developing their work plan for twenty twenty-six, and they're applying for a Crea Marketing, Marketing Grant. All right. We'll move on on our agenda. Number twelve is public participation. Do we have anyone else from the audience who hasn't spoken yet to participate? All right, thirteen is other items of business. We have no executive session tonight, so fourteen is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree, seconded by Keefhoffer.
Spruell?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Lewis? I'm sorry. Dehaven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keefhoffer?
Aye.
Medina?
Yes. All right, thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. Have a good evening.